This is the regular school board meeting at the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, August 11th at 7:00 p.m. And Dr. Richardson, there were a couple items in our table.
Yes, again, mainly items for the consent grouping. Our person of items, we have several appointments, some increase, decrease, and chains and assignments, and three resignations this evening.
All right, very good. If there's no objection, we will add those to the agenda as we move forward. You're next on for public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the district to address the board. Looks like no one is here to address the board. All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Four members you have in your packet, the minutes from the last school board meeting, which were for July 14th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by John, seconded by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. The minute is approved. Announcements and recriminations.
Okay, we have three announcements that I have this evening. First of all, just to let you know that the Minnesota Historical Society has awarded a Minnesota Historical and Cultural Heritage Grant in the amount of $9,994 for the second part of the history of the Northfield Public Schools, 1855 to 2010. And so they will begin work on that project once they get the official notification from the Historical Society. But again, this is part of the legacy grants, and if you remember, this is kind of the second phase. We had an outline that was created. Now this will actually begin putting together the actual document, the book. Second piece is wanted to announce that Rosemary Sharkey is the 2014 recipient of the Littercy Action Network's ABE Advocacy Award, which is to be presented at the ABE Summer Institute in St. Paul. Rosemary works with the Dakota Prairie Adult Basic Education Program as volunteer coordinator, night sight facilitator, and mentor teacher. And again, we're part of that cooperative. In addition, Rosemary teaches the adult English class at Greenbelt Park Elementary School and part of the Community School Initiative. Rosemary is active with adult basic education across the state, is a trainer for projects through MDE, and currently serves as an advisor to Hamlin University's Adult Learning System Professional Development. Rosemary has retired from the Carver Scott Cooperative in 2008 and began her work in Northfield as a retirement job. She is well-respected throughout the ABE community, is always ready to share experience and knowledge. She truly has a passion for ABE and our adult students. So again, congratulations to Rosemary. And then we wanted to let you know that 45 incoming seventh graders had a successful trip to Eagle Park. And we ran the trip earlier this year. We did it from July 28th to the 30th. It was a three-day experience, promoted learning. It dovetails very well with classroom, academic, and social needs. Community services would like to thank the following district staff and parent chaperones for assisting with the trip. They include Tony Sidel, who was the project leader, Rhea Merkens, and Jeff Pescia, and also parent chaperones included Paul Halls, Jennifer Dickerson, and Mark Lager. So again, congratulations to our group of explorers who managed to venture into the night and return it all together. Those are the only announcements I have this evening.
All right, great. Other announcements or recognition? Julie?
I just had one I wanted to thank Darrell Keller, Susan Sampson, Linda Otto, and Sarah Teller, for inviting members of the community to see first hand the Summer Plus program at the festival this past week. I think this program is a really excellent example of how our district administrators and staff continue to look at the ways to make changes to existing programs in order to make them the best that these kids. This year, the challenge was really with that six to eight grade group to try to motivate them to be really excited about coming to school in the summer, basically. And I think they made some really excellent changes that were reflected in the numbers. I understand they saw a really nice increase in numbers for that age of kids. Couple changes that seemed to work well. They were housed in at the middle schools while the younger kids were at the week, so having that separation, I think, was a real funny difference for the kids. And then the switch to more club-type focus for the afternoon enrichment classes, which included technology, art, science. Some kids had the opportunity to build their own vegetables, which they served at the event. So it was really, really neat to see. So again, those changes benefiting the kids and once again challenging themselves, the administrators and staff to make it as best as it can be. So of course, thanks to that staff, as well as Carlton College staff members, that helped facilitate a number of the club activities, not only at the middle school, but also inside the Carlton. So it was really great to have the opportunity to go in there and really see the program working. Thanks, everyone, for that event together.
Other announcements? Great. We are ready to move on to our first item for discussion, which is ATS and R Directions Presentation. And we have Dr. Pepper from ATS and R here.
That would be correct. That would be. And Mark is the trusted assistant and supporter.
We reverse roles.
Yes, for the evening.
Typically serve in the role of supporter of all the work that the architects and planners and designers such as Mark do. And I know you had a chance to work with Mark, and he does an extraordinary job. First of all, I want to thank you for inviting me tonight to be a part of your discussion and the initiative that you've undertaken in developing, working to develop a master plan for the future of your schools and what they look like. My understanding is, and by the way, I don't know if I'm a man that needs no introduction, Chris, or not, but just in case they say, well, who is this person?
Who is this guy?
That's standing before us. I have known Chris for probably some 20 years, and up until about two years ago, I was served in the public school sector as superintendent of schools. I retired from Olatana just two years ago. And prior to that, I was in Marshall, Minnesota as a superintendent of schools. And there's any number of other districts that I've served in different capacities. I really have had the good fortune of being able to serve in a lot of different capacities, from classroom teacher to business director to human resources and superintendent and so forth. So with that as a little bit of a background, so that you understand and listen to what I have to say, hopefully gives some credibility, at the same time recognize that there'll be some challenges, because I hope it do stimulate your thinking tonight as you look forward to working on completing your project and developing this plan. So my understanding is the work that you've done so far really centers around, and I know that you do have a handout, but I will tell you that as of 10:30 this morning, I was still working on it, so I'm not going to follow it just fully. But it's close. And if there's any part there that I missed, that I hit the chopping block, and you really want to touch on it, just let me know, because we can do it. But I do know this. I know that you've embarked upon learning more about your schools, how well they work, what needs repair, what doesn't need repair, the whole maintenance issues and so forth. Up to this time, I think you've talked a lot, and I know Mark presented at the last board meeting, how the buildings are scheduled and how effectively they're being used, where there might be some places, some opportunities, if you will, based on your enrollments. And I know that you looked at enrollment as well, how your classrooms might have some, be able to be used differently during various times of the day. And I know that as we move forward, and you're planning a work session on the 20th, I believe, that there will be more information that you'll be given relative to the condition of your buildings, the roofs and the infrastructure and so forth. What I've been asked to do today is to kind of maybe stimulate some of your thoughts about, okay, so we've got these buildings, and we know we need to take care of them, but for what purpose? I mean, what does education look like? We know our buildings are anywhere from 15, 20, and even years old, and even older than that. Are they, do they truly meet the educational needs of our children and of the staff as well? And so, you know, it's really, it's really kind of balancing, if you will, the whole understanding and knowledge that, you know, how students are taught, how our children are taught, how they learn, against the very practical, when you go into a community and say, well, our buildings need new roofs. Okay, yeah, we get that, and so forth. But when they say, well, our buildings, we need a different kind of space because some different kinds of things are happening, that's a little bit more difficult challenge, because all too often you hit that whole notion of, well, the buildings were good enough for me. They certainly are going to be good enough for my children or my grandchildren. So we're going to spend some time, and hopefully I'll bring some clarity and give you some basis that you can have those kinds of discussions with your friends and with your neighbors and among yourselves, be able to say, you know, it's more than just brick and mortar. It is what goes on and how we support that as well. So I'm really going to spend some time there recognizing that in either case, the community, your schools are investment by the community. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with the changing faces of our children. I'm going to ask a very simple question. Can we really teach these children? Yeah, maybe, you know, this is the school bell thing, back to school.
Saved by the bell.
Yeah, saved by the bell, thanks. You know, I was school.
That's old school.
I was school, but even appreciated. But, you know, they're a little bit more up and coming, and certainly, you know, these are our children. These are the ones that we recognize, right? I mean, they're boisterous, and they're active, and they're engaged, and they love to work with their teachers. They love to be able to demonstrate what they know and learn and so forth. Can we teach those kids the same way we used to teach? The way we were taught? Well, I was taught, a couple of you, maybe, Chris, you and I, but, you know, this actually was a classroom that came out of my yearbook. And, you know, we all remember those rooms. I mean, the tiles, we had the nine-by-nine tiles. Most of them, we found out, were asbestos and so forth, and so you got those challenges.
But they weren't my character.
We never knew it. This building looks to be probably built in the 1930s, 1920s, and so forth. There's a teacher on the side, usually in the front. And if this was a movie, you could probably almost recognize and see that that young man probably has that book, and he's shaking in his boots because he has to read a paragraph, right? We all are having to read. And that's not, that was not something that was a part of the greater culture, if you will. So the question is, can we really teach our children today the way we were taught? And here, of course, is the technology that I grew up with. I sat in front of a TV just like that. Most of you don't recognize it, don't remember. It was black and white, and you'll see those rabbit ears right here. Usually they work, but not always. And so somebody always had the responsibility to adjust the rabbit ears, and then what did you find out? You found out that if you just held them, right? If you just held them, then, you know, the picture was clear. So somebody usually didn't get to see the program because they were holding the rabbit ears. But it brings up the fundamental question and recognizing that our children are different today. They're different today than they were back in those days, whenever those were. Can we really teach children today the way we were taught? And I hope that you'll find and recognize, and you probably already know the answer, the answer is no, but hopefully we'll be able to have a kind of conversation that helps you to bring clarity to just why that occurs. And so we're going to start with the changing face of our society. The changing face of our society. That's where we're going to find the answer to the question, can we teach children today the way we used to be able to teach them? And I'm going to start with the end in mind. And the end is simply this. We've recognized today that in no time in history have our schools been asked to prepare students for as many careers and a life that doesn't even exist today. It doesn't even exist today. And yet, we're expected, as a public school, we're expected to prepare them for something, right? For something. So if we take a look at history then, we take a look at the challenge, most of you will know from your own study of history and so forth, that at the beginning of our nation, we were basically considered an agricultural community, an agricultural nation. And our historians will call it an agricultural age. And it really began when our country formed, and most historians will suggest that agricultural age lasted for 150 or so years. Now, what was going on in school at that time? Well, it was non-compulsory, didn't have to go. Your school experience was primarily six to eight years. And as you know, because we still live it today, school was between the crop harvest and the crop planting. That's when kids went to school. They didn't have to go, and so if chores called or something such as that, they didn't go. But here's the interesting thing about it. There was the three Rs was the basic curriculum. That was the basic curriculum, reading, writing, arithmetic. Now, there were bad spellers back then, because we all know that writing doesn't start with an R, nor does arithmetic, but it sounded cool. So that was the school's primary mission, the three Rs, and it took six to eight years to achieve it. And the interesting thing, and the thing that I want you to keep in mind relative preparing students, is that if you think about school as an incubator, when the children left society, left their world, to be incubated by the school, you can see that I have a hard time with this. I usually move, but I'll try to keep my voice projected. When they entered school and then left school fully capable and competent, because they have the three Rs mastered, when they left the incubation or the incubator, the society that they entered into as graduates, if you will, as completers of their school experience, was virtually the same society that they left. It was not difficult to prepare young people for their careers or their life after and beyond school. It was a fairly simple task. And guess what? Schools were held in high esteem. They did the job that the community, that parents wanted them to do. And while I know that today is, we're not going to talk a lot about architecture, if you look at the architecture of schools at that time, schools were either held in the churches during the school, during the work week, and then the church held the churches, of course, during the weekend, or guess what? They were built and modeled and constructed just like churches. They kind of looked the same. So it was a very interesting relationship, and society clearly drove and defined what schools would look like. Then historians would suggest we entered what was termed the industrial age. And loosely speaking, that started around the mid-1800s, the latter 1800s, and historians basically suggest that lasted about 100 years through World War II. Now, that was a dramatic change in our society, because we moved away from the agrarian base for our economy to an industrial base for our economy. And our society needed something different. What they needed is more advanced skilled workers. And what the schools did is they responded. Now, for a variety of reasons, one of which wasn't exactly positive, for the first time school became compulsory. And those of you that know a little bit about history understand that part of the reason for compulsory education was because our children were being used as cheap labor in industry, and there was a sense and a belief that we needed to protect them. So it became compulsory. The high schools were invented. So we had during that period of time, the first high schools. Now, what did the high school curriculum do, and what added value did it create for the society? Well, it created agriculture programs, vocational programs, industrial arts, mechanics, home economics, very traditional but supportive courses and classes to prepare those young people that attended them to be able to succeed and carry on a career, have a career in life. So again, if you think in terms of the school being an incubator, this time during the industrial period, when the child entered into the incubator, the society began to morph and change, but not at such a rapid rate that the school curriculum programs couldn't keep up with it. So even though when they left the incubator, the society looked a little bit different, a little bit more sophisticated, for the most part, they were prepared. And oh, by the way, you'll remember that at that time, you recall that there was a large number of people, young people, that just dropped out. And why did they drop out? Because they had the, there was a need for manual skills, they had enough technical skills to be able to be successful. So that's what schools looked like during the industrial period. Now, if we take a look at the next period of time, historians will suggest that this was the age of technology, technology age. Now, there's a couple of things that I want you to notice about this graph, because it's intended to tell a story in and of itself. You'll notice, first of all, that the slope is steeper. And what that represents and suggests is that changes outside of school, in our society, were more rapid than they had in any other time in history. You'll also notice that the length of that time greatly reduced, was greatly reduced. Whereas the agriculture age was 150 years or so, and the industrial age was about 100 years, most historians will suggest that the technological age lasted about 30 years. Now, you know enough to know and understand that none of these ages, I mean, they keep going, right? It's just that their influence in our society continued to decrease and diminish. So what was happening outside the schools during the 1950s, 60s, 70s, and 80s? Well, we won't go into the social aspects of it, because we all know during the 60s in particular, there's a lot of disruption. But within the society in a broader sense, and our business community, when we take a look at careers and the role and responsibility schools have for careers, there was all kinds of things going on outside of school. We have technology beginning in its earliest stages. 1957, Sputnik was launched by the Russians, and all of a sudden, we had this huge push. We've got to get into space. We've got to engage in the space race. And in 1962, we had a president that said, we're going to be the first nation to put somebody on the moon. Well, that doesn't happen by itself. It doesn't happen without an educated community, without an educated workforce. And so there were things that were going on in school from a curriculum standpoint. We had the National Science Initiative. Science became, began to be more important. I happened to start as a classroom teacher in math. And I started actually in the 60-ish. And one of my first tasks was to define for parents what it meant to be, what it meant to have modern math in your curriculum. What do you mean, modern math? Two plus two was still four, isn't it? Oh, yeah, but, you know, it's modern. And during that time, there was a lot of discussion about whether we switched to the metrics and so forth. So the school was impacted, but from the standpoint of being able to deliver curriculum in any meaningful way, we started lagged behind, where technology and in business and industry computers began to evolve, not the little ones that we use today, but the great big computers that took up rooms and so forth, and they needed those special skills. Guess what was happening in schools? Well, after lunch, if you had a social studies teacher, they typically would run a film strip. And, you know, if you really knew if your teacher was on the ball or not, or they were kind of punting, because, you know, you'd get the pop quiz, and everybody would sniff the paper, because, oh, they just loved that ink that came off of that mimeograph machine, right? Everybody just knew that it's kind of wet and damp, but it did kind of smell good. We were behind. We were behind what kids were experiencing now in their world. We could no longer incubate as safely as we once did. If you were lucky, you had a color, you had a TV, and if you were very lucky, you had a colored TV. In school, in school, you were watching films on two real projectors. And most teachers, I was one of those, never got the loop just the way it was supposed to be, and so you'd get this rippling all the time. So what would they do? One of the changes in schools is they'd have, they had an AV department for the first time. And what would that AV person do? Well, he would be, or she, but it was mostly he. He would be responsible for checking out the three film strip projectors, the four film projectors, and then have to go and make sure that every one that was being used was properly real. Now, there's one other thing that happened that, oops, oops, wrong button. Ignore that, you didn't see it. There's one other thing that happened right here at the end, that really underscores the issue and the problem, the separation between the ability of the schools to prepare children for that world now that was really changing. What happened was the report came out, nation at risk. And for the first time, the schools were pointed out and saying, look, you're not doing your job, and you're putting us at risk. Now fix it. And so schools and boards such as yours began that whole task of trying to fix something, and quite frankly, probably most critics would say, we didn't do a very good job, or just even now catching up. Because in the late 18, mid 1980s, up to about 2000, even as technology was continuing to evolve, we entered what historians would suggest is a new era, and that era was called knowledge or information. And the primary driver, the internet. The internet. And so people were going home, kids were going home, and they were listening to mom and dad, and dad in particular, because moms were laid into the workforce. We can talk a little bit about that. But all the changes that were taking place, all of the new skills that were needed, the technical skills, and they weren't being prepared for it. And they had the chance to do things at home that they didn't have a chance to do at school. I can recall my own children and their excitement over the Commodore that I brought home. Now, they just played pong, and, you know, a couple other basic games, right? But that was exciting. It was exciting to these young people. And they come into school, and guess what they do? They have lectures. And everything was delivered in the same way. So what began to happen in the 1980s, the 2000s, was the proliferation of options and alternatives, because based on the nation at risk, based on a general feeling that our schools aren't meeting the needs, we had initiatives such as charter schools, vouchers, PSEO, homeschools. All of those, all of those new initiatives were in response to a sense and a belief and a feeling that public education, as it was being delivered, wasn't meeting the needs of our children. And even before this got very far, you'll notice only 20 years, we sit in at a time today that most historians already suggest is the age of invention, or the age of creativity. And so the question becomes, how can we possibly, as schools, prepare our children for a society that is changing at such a dramatic rate, is so unpredictable, that we can be successful doing it in the current structure that we have? So all this leads to just literally an implosion. And all of you, I know, feel it, either from a parent's standpoint, from a board's standpoint, these huge and diverse expectations about what the school experience should be for our children. Now, let me put it to you just a little bit different. I'll spend this little time, and the reason for the frog, I'll come back to the frog, but there's a reason why that little frog is there. It's a friendly little thing. But just to summarize, so we know the agricultural age was simple. It was non-compulsory, reading, writing, arithmetic. During the industrial age, we had compulsory education, high school, vocational school programs. Women began the latter part to enter into the workforce. Why was that? It was because of the war, because of the war. And so you opened up a whole new avenue for young ladies, for our girls, to aspire to, something they hadn't had before. And then we move into the technology age, and that aspiration became even more pronounced when you look at new initiatives such as Title IX. Then we have the special education. I mean, Title IX created more challenges for schools, just from school facility standpoint, everything being fair and equal and so forth. The opportunities just exploded for half of our population, hadn't done it before. So you can see where in the age of technology and innovation, I mean, we take a look, we've got the competition-driven educational concepts, no child left behind, which, by the way, without getting into a lot of conversation about it, most of that accountability is accountability for what set, what set of skills. most of that accountability is accountability for what set, what set of skills back here in the industrial age. It's back in the industrial age. So we've got great accountability, but we've got accountability for a skill set that primarily is used, or needed, or was necessary in the latter part of the industrial age and early part of the technology age. Then we understand the world is flat, and so we have STEM and STEEP. And I highlighted the new immigrants just a little bit, just to underscore something. And that's simply this. Virtually every age that we've experienced as a society has faced the challenges of bringing new immigrants into its schools. In the industrial age, it was Western Europeans. During the technology age, it was primarily South and Central American students, young people. And now, it's African students. So, we've always had immigration and new immigrants, and the challenge of bringing different cultures into our school and working together in assimilation. Now, about the frog? I think most of you heard the story and understand that the tale about the frog. When you put him into a pot, and it's cold water, and you turn up the heat, and if you just let that water heat up to a boil, the frog, because it's so gradual, just dies. Because it doesn't know that the temperature has changed. Now, if you take the frog and put it in the boiling water, it jumps out as quickly as it possibly can. I couldn't find a dead frog. So, I didn't have any way to demonstrate that, you know? But you get the idea. I mean, education has evolved, but the question is, is it evolving quick enough? So, going back to the first theme, can we really teach kids today in the same way? I hope it becomes more clear and become more grounded in being able to say without question, "No, we can't." Because our society is different. It's different in very, very dramatic ways, and it's changing in extraordinarily rapid fashion. And the school has always had the responsibility to prepare its children for success in the future. So we can't do things the same. So, so what? Well, the good news is that there's a lot of changes that are taking place in our schools. There's a lot of different things that are going on. And we know enough now about education. We've learned a lot, and to suggest this, and this should make some sense. This actually comes from a work by Stephen Kenning and the essential design of principle of 21st century school. And he says this. He says, essentially, in every classroom, you find three different components. And it's obvious, you find the student, and you find a teacher, and you have content. Right? So, what he suggests is, in order for a student to ultimately become engaged, which, when a student is engaged in their learning, they're gonna learn the most, and they're gonna learn the best. And they're gonna be able to find their passion, and they are gonna be successful. So how do we get that engagement? What he suggests is this. He suggests that it's vitally important that the teacher and the student have a relationship. You've got to build relationships. I know as a, as a high school principal, one of the things I'd oftentimes do was just visit a student council or students in the cafeteria and so forth. I did some of this as well as a superintendent. And without looking specifically necessarily for names, but I always get them, I'd always ask that question, "So who's your favorite teacher?" And everybody always gave me an answer. They always had a favorite teacher. I said, "Well, what makes that teacher?" "How come?" And they would typically say two things. "Because I like that person," which is to say, "There's a relationship there." And then they say, "He or she knows his stuff." They expect, our students expect those two things from teachers. And when they get it, then you have engagement taking place. So there's relationship. There's also an important need to connect the student with the content. It's important to connect the student with the content. Nobody likes math. I found that out after years of teaching mathematics. It seems like nobody likes math, right? But you have to find ways to connect them to that subject. And when you do that, then you have the opportunity and the ability to engage that student. And then the teacher has to have content expertise. Now, I've talked to you, and you know by now that, yep, I taught math. And in college, my grad, you know, my undergraduate, I took every math course possible. All the trig's, all the calc's, all the, everything. I can tell you today without question that I could not teach a calc class. I doubt I could teach a trig class. I'm pretty certain I can't teach an algebra II class. Now, I know enough about it in my background to be able to study it and get it. But can I communicate it? Can I explain it? Can I help make that connection for that student? Those are the three things that Kenny says has to happen. And when it does, you have engagement. Now, why is that important? It's important because there is a consensus around the skills that our students need to be successful in a 21st century world. There is consensus around it. And those four skill sets are these. Competence, communications, collaboration, and creativity. Those are the skills that our students need to possess in order to better ensure that they can be successful in life, in whatever career comes their way. Now, I want to talk a little bit about each one of those to give you some kind of an understanding of what they mean, because they may not mean exactly what you're thinking. And it's important that we have, we have a broader understanding. Competence is this. You know, when we talk about, well, you know, schools are changing, and we've got, we've got activity-based education going on, and hands-on and so forth, you will get, undoubtedly, you'll get somebody saying, "Yeah, but they gotta know the three Rs." I say, "Yeah, they do." That's basic mastery of elementary content. But they have to have competence. They have to have competence. I've mastered the skill of reading. I believe that I'm a good reader. And I read quite a bit. But I'm certain that if you put before me a book on how to perform an appendectomy, I could read it, but you're not gonna want me to perform the appendectomy. You're just not gonna. And that's where it's important to be able to develop not just the basic reading skill, but the ability to comprehend and develop competence in whatever field you choose to do. So, when we talk about the three, the four Cs, and you hear the content, yep, the content, but it's more than that, it's competence. It's the ability to be able to transform and translate. I just, you know, I use the other extreme. I mean, I just bought a lawnmower here recently. And, and I saved $80 by getting one that I had to assemble. Now, that was, that was a little bit of a mistake, right? Because I took this, you know, and they're all books. Have you noticed that? I mean, they're all books, four different languages. You either start from the front, start from the back, depending upon which language. And by the way, I didn't understand any of, not even the English one. That's just not my wheelhouse. So when we talk about developing the basic skills, yes, but it's more than that. You have to develop competence with our kid, with our children in order for them to be able to be successful. Communication. You know, I talked a little bit about, I talked a little bit about the no child left behind and doing the whole, the whole testing thing and accountability. And that's great. But guess what we test when it comes to communication? We test the reading or the writing scores. We have them write a paragraph and say, "Yeah, that's okay here, no, that's not so okay here." Well, we look at, we look at sentence structure. We look at organization. We might even have, have them make a presentation. Say, "Well, yeah, this person can talk. He does all right, she does okay." But there's more and different kinds of communication than the simple oral or written communication. There's performance. There's art. There's poetry. There's music. And when we talk about developing competence, every child has to develop competence in communication. But it may not be the communication that we think of in a traditional way. It may not be that at all. And until we recognize that, we're going to not hit everybody. We're not, we're, some, some young people are going to get missed and not have the chance to be as successful as they otherwise might be. Collaboration. Unfortunately, we live in an environment today that it seems like collaboration was completely missed in somebody's curriculum. Right? You know, I mean, collaboration is the, is the notion and the recognition that a person's idea is good, but the collective ideas of many is better. It always is. And so, when you think in terms of, of the importance of developing that skill, think of it in terms of having, being able to make sure that somebody can add value to by working with those around them. That's where success comes from. That's where success in life comes from. So we know that those four skills, plus creativity. Creativity, simply defined, is the ability to add value to an idea. Think about something differently. And industry and businesses in our world today value creativity. If you, if you're familiar at all with the, some of the books of Daniel Pink, he suggests in his, in his book, A Whole New Mind, that if whatever it is that we do can be done with your hands, if it's manual, can be produced, it's gonna be done in the future in someplace else, not in the United States. The place where the United States is going to succeed and achieve is in creativity. We need to recognize that our role in our greater world is flat, is in creation. It's in invention. And every child has creativity. And it's our role and responsibility to be able to nurture it. Now, there's a fifth one there that I've included. But it's not about the skill set at all. It's just a reality that, and today, if we cannot do the kinds of things that we've just spoken about, parents are gonna walk. Students are gonna turn us out. They're consumers. They know that one size doesn't fit all. They know that they may not very well want what it is that we're gonna get. And so, they're gonna shop around and find it someplace else. So, there is a common language that, that can be found in 21st century education. And it centers around these six or seven different descriptors. Education today, in the future, needs to be customized. It needs to recognize that there, that every individual is unique and learns in their own unique way. And as challenging that is for a classroom teacher, we recognize that it's important to be able to pay attention to the different needs. It doesn't mean that every education, every educational experience needs to be one-on-one. But it does need to be recognized that there needs to be multiple approaches to learning. Individualized. Yes, in order to get to that point where there's engagement, we need to recognize that everybody has a different interest within a content. Everybody's interested in math. They may just not know it. And the challenge is to be able to find it. Find that light switch for everybody. And to say, "Yeah, okay, I get this, now I'm interested." Asynchronous. I was after getting that on the first try. Asynchronous. What's that mean? That's just, just simply, it's 24/7. You know, I don't know your curriculum well enough, and I don't know how your schools operate well enough. I apologize. I probably should have asked this question, Matt, and, of Matt and Chris, and we talked last week. But essentially, that means this. And I know from my school experience as a superintendent. You know, if I go into, into Henry Sibley High School or Henry Sibley Elementary School, and I say, "Well, let me see your schedule. What do you do?" "Well, you know, we teach reading at 8:00 in the morning. And reading's very important. So, you know, we, we teach it for 90 minutes. Now, nothing else gets 90-minute block. And then we go to math. And then we give the kids a break, and then we go to, and so forth." So, and in that district, I'll go, I'll go to John Marshall. And I say, "Well, tell me about your day." "Well, at 8:00, we do, we do reading. And we do reading for, you know, 90 minutes, because we know reading needs more time. And then we go to math." It's just identical. And yet, the students from that school may, may present themselves much, much differently than the school, than the students from the other side of town. So why is it that we need to do everything the same? Why is it that everybody needs to learn math at 9:00 in the morning, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday? Maybe they should redo it instead, because they're better thinkers, and they're, they're thinking about math in the afternoon. Have we asked them? Have we checked? That's what it means to be asynchronous. That's what it means to be asynchronous. It doesn't all have to be at the same time for everybody in the same way. Small group, decentralized, self-directed, virtual empowering. Those are, those are all components. So that's the language of today's instruction. That's what should be going on in our classrooms today. And the reason it should be going on in our classrooms is because if we're gonna meet the expectations of that 21st century invention age, we're gonna need to do things differently than we have in the past. Now, I have had enough of a conversation, and I'm a new resident of Northfield. And so, I've been following schools a little bit closer than, than I might otherwise do. Plus, I have two grandchildren now that are going to school here. So, I have a real invested interest in the quality of schools here in Northfield. But I know you're doing some really good stuff. Really creative things. And you are responding in such programs, such as Project Lead the Way, and I know you're talking about the one-to-one and the tablets. You've got Spanish Emergent. The Ninth Grade Academy, as I understand it, is basically one of those efforts to kind of shrink down and become more, more tuned into the individual needs, obviously, online learning. So you're doing some really, really good, what I'd suggest to you is 21st century schools instruction. Which brings us then to the whole notion of our space. And the question, this time, gets changed just a little bit. Can we really teach today's kids in the same facilities that we taught the kids in the past? Can we really do all those kinds of things? The differentiation in instruction, the online instruction, the one-to-one, those kinds of things that are going on, can we really do those in, in today's, in today's schools, in their, in their buildings? One of the things that I've had an opportunity to do over the last couple of years is I've had a chance to visit a lot of schools and meet with a lot of kids and meet with a lot of faculty. And when I meet with the students, I ask them three questions. I ask them three questions, and the questions are this. Tell me what works in your building. Tell me what you don't like in your building. And if you could, what would it look like? What would your buildings look like? And it's amazing the kinds of responses that, that we get and that I get in those kinds of conversations. And what I shared with you is what I consider to be kind of some key themes. In other words, this isn't coming just from one person. These are coming from students from different schools at different levels, and there's some consistency in what they're looking for. They'd like spaces in which they can gather throughout the day. You know, we think in terms, and I know that my generation is concerned about the ability of students to communicate and the relationships and so forth. They just do it differently. And in many respects, they're more social than we ever were. They just socialize differently. But the contact is something that is inherent. They, they seek it, they want it, and they utilize it. You know, when I was in, when I was in school, and maybe some of you had the same experience, and especially, I can talk about math people, because I was a math person. You know, we'd get the assignment, and the last thing the teacher would say is, "Now, you know, I want you to do the odd number problems." And there was the odd number of problems, because the even number problems were in the back of the book, the answers. And so, they didn't want you to, you know, look at the answers. And, and then she said, "And you need to do your own work. Do not share your work with anybody." Well, today, that's called collaboration. And some of our best teachers are our peers. So, kids realize that, and they love to have places where they can gather, they can socialize. They... Uh, they understand that technology is important to their learning. I was doing a crossword puzzle, uh, the other day, and my, my five-year-old, six, no, she's seven. My seven-year-old granddaughter came up, she says, "Grandpa, what are you doing?" I said, "A crossword puzzle." "Oh." Well, she said, "How does that work?" She started shaking down my lap. And so, I said, "Well, you see, uh, you, you, you get little questions or little words, and then, you're supposed to find the answers and put them in these boxes." "Oh," she said, "can I help?" I said, "Sure." She gets off my lap, she runs, she gets her iPad, and she brings it, and she's all ready to look up on Google. Okay, she said, "What's the first one?" I mean, that's just natural for our children today. They use technology, and they recognize that that's an inherent part, an integrative part of their learning process. So, you, it's important that we recognize that in the, in the spaces that we create. They'd like places for performance, I talked about that a little bit. Now, when I'm talking about performance, I'm not talking about the stages. Every school, most schools all have stages. And that's just one element, one part of communication. That, that young man that was standing in front of the class, his book shaking because he had to read a paragraph, that doesn't exist anymore for most of our children, for too many of our children. They love to show off, they love to perform. And when they do a project in school, they love to share it. And so, schools, uh, and we're gonna see some of that, schools are designed so that there's little places where they can break out and they can share information with one another. So, that's what, that's what students want. They want the sense of security, security, they want intimacy on the side. I didn't see anybody really looking at that. But they recognize, they recognize that learning is different for everybody. And so, they recognize that there's places where they need to look different because they learn different. A third grader, this is a true story, a couple of years ago, I was visiting with a group of students. It was a relatively new building, but they were facing some, uh, some enrollment problems. And so, I met with a small group of students, and, and this was a beautiful building. And I said, "Okay," so I asked the three questions, "So, what would you like?" And this girl says, "Well, I'd really like a place where we can take things apart and put them back together again." I said, "Well, you don't have any?" "No," she said, "we don't have any place like that." Coming from a third-grade student, now, now, her, her, her colleague, a young man, said, "You know, uh, what I really need is, we need, we need, you know, like in an airport, we need one of those floors, you know, that move." So, you, you, you don't always necessarily think you're gonna get, you're gonna get the right, you know, the, a, a, a serious answer. And, and so, he wants a moving floor, right? So, I, but I checked with him a little bit, and I said, "Okay, so, why do you need a moving floor?" Well, he said, "You know, our halls are very crowded." And he said, "You know, I have to go from class on this end of the building all the way to this end of the building, and I only have three minutes to do it, I could really use some help." So, so, you know, it, it, it made some sense. And the real message there probably was, maybe you need to look at scheduling and so forth because, you know, I need to schedule kids differently. And looking at this building, I can see where, you know, maybe a little bit of that kind of a floor might come in handy, although you have to watch the corners. So, these are the things that our kids are, are, are looking at and are wanting. So, I, I also talk to teachers, and I ask them, "Well, so, tell me what it is that you want? What's, what's important, uh, for you?" One of the things they, they almost always go to is the core of the building. There's the, the sense that whether it's a cafeteria or the gymnasium or the, or the media centers, they're not large enough to be able to support the kinds of activities that they want to provide. That's a common issue, and I understand that that's something that's come up in some of the early conversations here as well. Everybody recognizes, and that, that's related to what the students want as far as that gathering spot. Uh, they want classrooms that are fresh and bright, and they want opportunities as well to, uh, to, uh, expand in technology. And on the bottom here, I think one of the things that's so very, very important is they need professional development space. When we're asking our teachers to teach differently, to do things differently, to plan differently, and I know you've got some active, uh, PLCs in this, in, in this, uh, in this district, you know, one of the most disheartening things for me as a, as a superintendent, when I attend a meeting in an elementary school, inevitably, for whatever reason, uh, and maybe it was because, you know, it's on purpose, uh, but he attended a meeting in the kindergarten room. And while it didn't take me very long to sit, sit down on those desks and those little chairs, it took me a little bit of an effort to, to get back up. And, you know, you don't feel very professional sitting in a chair that's, that's 18 inches off the floor. And yet, when we have those expectations of our staff, that's something that's important to have. So, when we describe and take a look at 21st century learning spaces that support the kind of education that we're talking about, um, there's about eight different characteristics that, that, you know, you need to kind of use as a measuring stick, if you will, to take a look at your building, say, you know, "Do we do this or not? Are these the things that, that, that make sense to us?" So, uh, let's take a look at it. Ubiquitous, and flexible, and safe, and performance differentiated, well-lit. You can see that all of these things, uh, basically support what it is that our students and our staff and the new instructional models are, uh, are asking and suggesting that we do. So, ubiquitous learning space, what's that mean? Well, that means the building breathes learning. Building just breathes learning. You can't go anyplace in the building and, and, and not, not see or, or know that learning is going on, learning's taking place. I'm not gonna put Mark on the spot, uh, right now because I know that, and we're getting close to time. And, and if he starts on the building thing, well, we'll just save it for next, for the work session because then would be even longer. But here's what a ubiquitous building looks like. And this happens to be, uh, this happens to be, uh, I.J. Holton Building in Austin. Brand-new building, right? And here's what you find in the hallways. You'll find, you'll find the hallways as a learning tool. Uh, on the hallways, on the floor, there's, you know, there's yard markers so kids get a sense of distance and perspective. And they can do, uh, science and math, uh, learning out in the hallway. This is a history, this is a history, uh, wall in which kids can go by at any point in time, and they change that from time to time and show what's going on in history. You'll notice that, uh, there's places for, uh, kids to work together. And in each one of these, uh, classroom, uh, spaces, uh, you, you can more readily see how, uh, those four Cs can take place. Uh, natural collaboration space. Competence, a more traditional classroom, but one of the things that you're seeing is un, what I'll call non-traditional furniture. A different kind of furniture. Furniture that's more comfortable in some cases, uh, is more preferable, and you'll see some, uh, some actual examples of that. So, that's what ubiquitous looks like. Flexible learning spaces, learning space that can be used in multiple different ways. Uh, this happens to be a garage door, and this is actually in place, uh, in Austin as well. Uh, glass, and they just bring this down. Here's walls that move so the teacher can, uh, have multiple learning stations and work. And kids can work in groups, or they can work in, as a traditional classroom, if you will. Uh, a lot of collaborative spaces, technology, uh, being used as the center of that. Kids want to have, uh, and, and the school needs to have, be safe, welcoming, learning spaces. A place where the community can be proud, they can point to and say, "Yeah, that's our school." And they can see beyond that entryway, and they can say, "Yep, there's good things that are happening in that school." Uh, those, those things are taking place, uh, in, in new construction and in renovation as well. And I think Mark has shared some of that with you. I talked about performance space. It's not just about the stage. It's about having spaces, maybe in a media center such as this, a media center where there's just a small platform and, and kids can come around and somebody showing a project. Or maybe it's a, a place that's technology-rich, uh, on the other side of this performance area. But you can see different kinds of spaces that support the different kinds of learning that are going on, that support the development of the skills of competence and the skills of creativity and communication and collaboration. Differentiated learning spaces. We talked about how, how students wanted that. Here's a traditional classroom, but they're using a non-traditional way of, of sharing and, uh, and developing ideas and thoughts. Uh, here's something that you don't see in, in too many schools. Just a nice, comfortable, informal area where students can gather and learn. Naturally, you need to respect the individual, and then, a little, this happens to be a little cubby in which, uh, kids can come together, work together. You see a lot of spaces where it's not just for one person, but two, three, or four, and technology is woven into it. The well-lit spaces, this particular space is a renovated space. I'm familiar with it because it was renovated in Oatana while I was there. Uh, and, uh, again, you can see the well, the, the well-lit areas. This is a, this is a, a, a space in which students here are actually talking with a class of students from Iowa. Uh, they develop a sistership relationship. Uh, a lot of high chairs and high tables are, are coming more into play where students can do their one-on-one, uh, online learning. Technology-enriched, that's obvious. Uh, we see more and more forum classrooms coming into play, giving students here a chance to share their work, to, to present out, and giving teachers a chance to work maybe with more than one class at one time. Again, you'll see a lot of collaborative space, a, a lot of flexible space that goes on as well. And then, variety-enriched spaces, different kinds of spaces. Here's a cafeteria that's been renovated. Uh, you can see that it's a little bit more comfortable than the typical cafeteria where you have the tables and you have the stools that kind of attach to it and so forth. Uh, and here, a group of students are working together. Uh, here, uh, they're working together. Uh, teacher is in the front, but there's a whiteboard in the back. These students happen to be using the whiteboard as a part of an individualized activity. In this particular space, here's your teacher stations here, and, uh, there is no, there is no, uh, barrier, if you will, between the teachers working and the students. So, the question is, can you really teach in the same kind of space that we always taught? And hopefully, uh, through this presentation, you'll have a better understanding of why we teach differently, the necessity to teach differently, and understand that the answer to this question is, you know, no, we, we absolutely can't. So, the challenge is always, how do we balance? How do we balance, uh, recognizing the basic maintenance needs and the community's investment in roofs and in tuck pointing and, and, and some of those things while we also recognize the need to invest in order to prepare our children for that 21st century education? To create the kind of spaces that will provide, uh, students the ability to develop communication skills and, and hone their creativity, uh, and work in a collaborative fashion. So, um, I know that the next step is, happens on the 20th. And my, my hope is that, uh, that, you know, we've been able to cover a little bit, develop some understanding. I'll stand for any questions you may have. But it is about putting the pieces of the puzzle together. It is about balancing, uh, your basic maintenance, maintenance needs while supporting the educational needs and the changing needs that our, our children have today and the changing expectations that society has for us in the future. So, uh, I wish you luck in putting, uh, putting that together. I don't know after tonight whether or not I'll get invited to any more meetings, but, but if I am, I look forward to being a part of it. Otherwise, I know you're in capable hands with your superintendent and Matt and, and Mark. And I open myself up to any questions you may have.
Question?
I talked to you guys up. I said, "Very seldom do, does anybody get out of here without some questions asked." So, don't, please don't. Tom, he, he's, he's gonna be very concerned if he's the only one that gets out of here.
No, actually, I'm good.
You're good, you're all good.
I'm all right, I understand. Uh, you know, and, uh, you know, I, hopefully, you know, I, I gave you what you probably already knew in many respects, but maybe hadn't thought about it in terms of that historical perspective and recognizing the fundamental relationship between the public schools and the society that it serves. We do serve the society. Society does not serve us. And so, our task only gets taller, it only gets greater, and the challenge is, uh, not insurmountable. But it can certainly be helped by working the way in which you folks are working and thinking in terms of space and how space can help create that, that environment. I, I, I should mention, by the way, just, just one thing. I don't know how many of you saw that article in the newspaper yesterday on innovation. And it was by Ted Colderies in Minneapolis, Star and Tribune. And basically, his premise is, you know, a real innovation in the classroom, and it has to happen, it starts with your teachers. And I, I fully support and agree with that. I know that Chris, and I know that all of you folks do too. But, uh, he also says, you know, "You have to have a culture creating an environment that encourages invention and innovation." And your school buildings are a big part of that environment. They're a big part of the environment. So, um, I, I hope that, you know, as I said, maybe I've given you some things to think about and maybe think about a little bit differently. But if nothing else, that I've armed you with, uh, the ability to talk with your neighbors, talk with your friends as things move forward and say, "Yeah, you know, but here's why we need to be doing things differently." Because we don't live in the same world that we used to live in, and we can't teach kids the same way because we're not preparing them the way they need to be prepared. So, thank you very much. I'm done.
Good question, Sam. Okay, Anne?
Um, did you get to look at all of our buildings?
I, I have not yet personally, no.
Because it, it's kind of interesting, um, when I was looking at your slides, um, I kept thinking about how our school, Greenville Park Elementary, looks a lot like some of the spaces that you have. Because it has multiple walls and it's.
Right.
1971.
You know, those early 70 buildings, you know, that, that, that. And, um, it, it has certain problems, but it also has, well, just an architecture that some of these things we're talking about would be.
To use. And, and, you know, one of the things that I'm, I'm hoping along the way, because I, because I know you're, you know, you're, you're far from being complete in this task. But I mentioned, uh, the opportunities that I've had in the past to visit with students, and I am hoping that, uh, somewhere along the way, I'll have that opportunity to visit with students and, and bring that feedback to you and to your administration, to visit with your staff. But, you know, you talk about the 1970s. Remember what I said about the 1970s? There was a lot of, uh, things in flux, and one of the things that was happening was the open classroom. And so, there were buildings that were designed, you know, with, with more openness in mind. Unfortunately, all too often, what happened was that is, you, you assigned a teacher to do it, uh, to teach in that, that space, and if they didn't get along with the person next to them or the classroom was too noisy, you got artificial barriers that, that went up. And, and, and that goes to the whole issue and the importance of staff development. You know, you, you, you're working on the one-to-one project, and I haven't had a, uh, any kind of an in-depth conversation with either Dr. Richardson or Matt. But, you know, one of the things that I have found in, in, uh, visiting schools and, you know, every, not everybody, but so many are going to this, to the one-to-one, but they're not exactly sure why or how it works. And all too often, your teachers, if they're not trained, if they don't, if they're not given the opportunity to develop the skill set, they don't get used. So, you know, even in, even in that school design, I, I've had conversations with Mark and, uh, with his colleague that designed the, uh, the I.J. Holton Building. And, you know, it, it needs to come with instructions, quite frankly. When we, when we start making changes to our buildings, we need to begin the practice of coming with instructions. Because like the lawnmower, by the way, I did get it assembled. As, as I opened the box, all I had to do is, is loosen, is loosen two screws and flip the handle over, and I'm good to go. So, so it wasn't very complicated, it didn't have to take out a tool. Um, but buildings are more complex today. And, and so, you know, the opportunity to make sure that we develop adequate staff training, staff development, and so forth is really an important part of that.
Other questions? Julie?
I just have a comment. I thoroughly enjoyed this presentation, and you did, you made so much to think about, and I really appreciate it. It was interesting when we were talking about theoretical capacity, and my mind was thinking, because that, that doesn't have anything to do with where we are now. And I think the community could just walk in, when I was, uh, had kids at the elementary school and just try to do, you know, reading club or anything, it was virtually impossible. So, I think for a lot of parents who have had the opportunity to come into our schools any given day, they see how the spaces just don't really work to where, you know, we're educating kids today. But I really enjoyed it very much.
Thank you very much.
Other? No?
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, this is not a board that is reticent to ask questions, but I really do believe we're almost, I am. we're almost, I am overwhelmed with the information that you've shared with us and very thoughtful time ahead of us.
Thank you. And, and, you know, I, I think that's, that's so important for you to be able to do that and take the time, and that was what I, part of what I was hoping to accomplish is, you know, do we really stop to think about just where we've been and why we're going where we're needing to go? And what tools do you have as a board to help the community understand? Because you can have all the open houses you want, but it's, it's difficult to get any, you know, you get five or 10 people coming in, and they're for the most part parents, uh, and they already know it. They know that their ki-, their kids learn differently, and they know why they need to learn differently. So, uh, hopefully, I've helped give you a little bit of ammunition, if you will, to move forward.
I think one of the key things in, in asking Tom to put this piece together for us tonight is that, as we kind of think about this thing unfolding, we began really with looking kind of at the 30,000-foot view in terms of, of the deferred maintenance issues, and we kind of picked those pieces off. We took a look at some of the educational adequacy issues in terms of, do we have enough spaces for certain things? But I think our belief was that before we could really get into beginning to put some balance to things in terms of, yes, we know there are some deferred maintenance pieces that have to get done. We know there are some educational adequacy pieces that need to get done, but I think before we can go forward, we also need to ask the questions about, will the facilities sustain us into the future? And if we're looking at a facility that, that really reinforces confidence and creativity and collaboration, can we do that with buildings that for the most part were created as boxes? Boxes within boxes to basically put as, as many kids into a space and, in the case of secondary, to move from room to room, in the case of the elementary, to basically keep them in one space throughout the day? And yet, as we think about what we've done, even in the last five or 10 years, the concept of flexible grouping, where you really want to be able to move kids around between the different classrooms so that they're being taught at the level that makes sense to them, to develop individualization, to develop an ability to address their needs where they are, the spaces we have are not necessarily conducive to doing that. And we also know from Mark's presentation last time, that we have a number of our buildings where we frankly were really tight on the common spaces. So the media centers, the cafeterias, the, the gathering spaces are pretty tight. Uh, and so I think as we think about this, we need to go forward thinking about, you know, to what extent are we going to be able to address those 21st century needs? And do we, you know, can we do that in a, in a way that's going to be long-term cost-effective for the system? So in other words, is it sticking an addition on a building? Or is it rethinking how a building is going to be used? Or who's in that building? Or how that building functions for us? Or whether it continues to function, especially as we get buildings that now are approaching 60 years old? And others that are really fairly new? So, I, I hope that this gave you a chance to kind of see there's multiple pieces going in, and I know they've talked about IJ Holton a lot. It's a fabulous building to go into. Um, I had a chance to visit last fall, and as a middle school building, you think about our middle school and how it's set up, and you think about the fact that, yes, there are some center spaces where the locker bays are, but in, in, in IJ Holton, every classroom wing has the ability to blow it open. The garage doors can come down with your class and close off your room from everybody else's so you can do the things you need to do with your class in the classroom, but you can also run the doors up and you could put several hundred kids into, into a space to do the kinds of things that they need to do. And the gathering spaces are all focused in, in the center of the building. And as Tom mentioned, the other thing that really is powerful is, I know that even for us as adults, and a group of super nents going into the building just to visit, and you're going in and looking, and there's a timeline that starts at the floor and goes to the ceiling, and starts, you know, starts with prehistory and all the way up, that just visually from the second floor, you get the sense of how many years you had dinosaurs roaming Eric versus, you know, the Ice Age versus any kind of modern history that we know about, in a way that you could never, you just would have trouble visualizing otherwise. So, it's the idea of saying, um, the building complements the learning and enhances the learning, not gets in the way of it, or makes it difficult to happen. And we all have heard, you know, my God, I went to that school, it was good enough for me, it's, will be good enough for my children, it'll be good enough for my grandchildren. But I think the reality is, we think about what kids need, I think that we need to take that hard look, and hopefully, this has kind of opened that piece up so that when we talk about this on the 20th, we begin to start thinking about, what are the balances? Tom has a two, two pan balance. I think we actually have a three pan balance. We have one pan that really is the deferred maintenance. We have one pan that is really the adequacy of just having spaces that need to be in the building. And then we have this third piece, which is, does this building really have the flexibility to do the things it's going to need to do 10 or 20 years out? Because our hope is, the master plan that Mark and Tom and others from ATS and R are helping us to create, is a plan that takes us out 10 to 20 years in the future so that we know what we're up against and what we need to look at. I bet Matt has a follow-up.
Why is that?
My, my voice is gone. You got a question?
And I should have thought, that's when I met Tom last Friday, but I was struck, Tom, when you were talking about the changing, um, age of the students that we work with, you know, that in the agrarian age, we worked with kids for six, eight years, and now we're obviously formally working for 13 with all-day kindergarten, despite it not being compulsory yet, but I think another piece, just to, to think about, maybe you can help us with what you've seen in other districts, is that we are serving much more than that. I mean, early learning, the state obviously has the early learning scholarships, we're seeing a push for more and more early learning. ECFE is no longer totally in our school buildings, it's out in the community at apartment complexes and community centers. We have the Community Schools Grant that is really advocating that school become mu- much more than just a learning center, that it's looking at the whole child with physical health and mental health and those other kinds of pieces. How are you seeing those things that are beyond K-12 impacting communities as they're rethinking what school means? Because I would venture to guess, if you look at our facility schedule, a number of these same spaces that are used during the day for regular K-12 are used for adult learning. They're either getting adult ba- basic education, they might be learning English, they might be learning how to use their iPad, my favorite, the lightsaber dueling, you know, you need a space for that. How are you seeing those things that are beyond K-12? If you were to just put one slide in your presentation about that, what could you share with us about what you've learned so far?
Well, it, what, in the districts that, that I've been working with, um, the emphasis, quite frankly, has been more on the pre, uh, pre-K than the post, because, uh, all too often, quite frankly, now in, in particular, and that's not to take anything away from adult ed, but there's so many different ways that, that your older population, uh, online learning and so forth, uh, that can access their education. And so, especially when it comes to facilities, the investment is, is with the pre-K. And, you know, again, that, and that, that philosophy differs, uh, but most of them are trying to incorporate somehow, get them attached to the schools that their children ultimately will be going to, because it breaks down that whole, that, that hesitancy and the, the fear that our youngest children have for learning, and so it's about familiarizing themselves. And as everybody knows in this board, uh, the needs, the, the room designs for our, our pre-K are dramatically different than they are, they need the large motor spaces and so forth, so you, you see very little, uh, space that can accommodate those kinds of developments in the existing buildings, and so they're looking to modify in some way, or that's where the add-on comes, uh, comes into play for the youngest learners. So most of the things I'm seeing is with addressing the importance and recognizing the importance of the pre-K.
I just brought that forward so that we're thinking more than just K-12, because we are, we do have significant needs at both ends of the spectrum as well.
And the other thing, the other reality is, I, I haven't, I, I did look at some of your, uh, some of the, uh, population studies and your student enrollment and so forth, uh, but once again, uh, parents go shopping, and they go shopping early, and if there's a good pre-K program someplace else, uh, in some other district or with a charter or something such as that, and I know there's some of that activity in, in this community as well, that's where they'll stay, because that's where their kids are familiar. So, it, it's a, it's a, you know, it's certainly a wise comment, you know, Matt, to recognize that pre-K is really an important ingredient, part two, not only short-term serving the needs of those students, but long-term for the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Tapper, and thank you, Mark, for joining us again.
You notice he's been taking copious notes. Yes. And we do have a meeting with, with Tom and Mark, um, Thursday, and we're going to be laying out the approach for, for the next phase of this as we begin to do the work session. So, uh, again, appreciate the fact that we've got these three pieces that are kind of laid out for you before we begin to start thinking about now, how do we, uh, begin to say, what are the things that we're most interested in? The other piece that, that will get discussed at the work session will be, and how do we engage the community and the staff and parents in this discussion? Because we know we cannot go very far in this discussion without bringing them into the process. And, uh, ATS and R has got a really good track record of, uh, strategies for engaging communities at the building level, which I think is probably the direction we're going to head. So, be aware that not only we'll be starting to talk about priorities, but we'll also be talking about an engagement strategy for working with our community. Okay? Super.
Very good. All right, we will be ready to move on to our first item for individual action, which is a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling school board election. And as you know, we still have one more day for people to be, um, submitting their affidavit of candidacies, but, um, this is something that we always move on at this time period. So, um, superintendent's recommendation is to move to approve the resolution relating to the election of school board members, um, which will take place on Tuesday, November 4th. Is there a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by John? Seconded by me? Discussion? Is the roll call vote ahead?
Aye.
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 And then we are ready to move on to our items in the consent grouping. I'll remind board members there were a few additional, um, personnel items added in your table file.
Uh, I would request to move the swim club agreement off the consent agenda, uh, again, because of my family's involvement in the swim club.
Okay. So, um, we have a request to have the swim club agreement off the consent grouping. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping without the swim club agreement?
Yeah.
Moved by Julie.
Okay.
Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping without the Northfield Swim Club Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next would be the Northfield Swim Club Agreement as a separate, um, item. Is there a motion to approve the swim club agreement? So moved. Moved by Anne.
Seconded.
Seconded by Julie. Uh, discussion? Now, I assume John had said you would like to abstain, is that?
I would abstain.
Okay. All right, so, um, we will ask for, um, we've got a motion and a second for the swim club agreement. All those in favor of the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Aye.
If one, John abstaining, that motion carries. We've got several items for information. Um, first is the filing dates. Do you want to say a few words about that?
Yes, and again, remember that the filing period ends tomorrow, Tuesday, August the 12th at 5:00 PM. So that's the last time that people are going to be able to file, and then, um, they have until August.
4:30 on Thursday.
4:30 on Thursday, uh, to withdraw if they would choose to withdraw. At this point in time, uh, we have three individuals who filed an affidavit of candidacy, and they include Julie Pritchard, Fritz Bogot, and Jeff Quinell.
Very good. Our second item is, uh, a reminder about the school board work session. Any board members, you had in your packet a revised, um.
Draft.
Draft agenda. Do, Dr. Richardson, I assume you're going to tell us a little bit more about the, the changes, or?
I think in, in terms of, of that draft, the, the key thing I wanted to share with you is just that, again, as we've kind of looked at this, we know that to, to begin with, we'll try to do a quick summary for you of, again, coming back to the demographic study and the housing unit study and the trends there. We'll summarize the facility study findings, and we'll s- do a summary of the ATS and R directions presentation. So, we'll, we'll try to take in very short order, kind of reminding you of those three components. And I think what we want to do at, at this meeting will be really to begin looking at, beginning to, to, um, lay out possible maintenance and repair priorities in terms of remodeling, addition, or repurposing issues, in terms of educational adequacy pieces, but also to be looking at, from the trends perspective, are there some options that need to be on the table as we begin thinking about how differently might we address, um, the buildings if we really sat down and said, create these buildings so that they will do the things that we need to do for 21st century educational program? We also need to take a little bit of time to talk about the, again, the concept of the current elementary boundary enrollment procedures, because at some point, I think we need to determine, are we going to try to artificially lock that up so that we, we maintain a better balance because of the attendance areas? Or are we just going to keep that open as much as it is, where right now, significant number of individuals have chosen to move to a different attendance area because that's where their babysitter is? And I know that's been in place for a long, long time. I think we just need to, to address that, because what we're seeing now is enrollments that if everybody was back in their home space, would be about even, and because they're not, we have two buildings that have literally 100 to 115 or 20 more kids more than the third building that has less. And so, and all the buildings really have literally the same capacity. So I think we just need to, to come to grips with that, that discussion. And then I think the last piece we definitely want to do as part of that key question discussion is talking about, what's the right way to engage our community? How are we going to talk to our parents? How are we going to talk to our kids? How are we going to talk to our staff? How are we going to talk to committee members about this? And what's the best strategy? And Tom alerted, alluded to, you know, do you have a committee-wide meeting and have five people show up? Or do you look at maybe a strategy that says, it would be better to have multiple meetings at different buildings so that you draw the people to the building where they're attached, because that's where the kids are? Or that's where the kids have been? So I think we want to deal with that. And again, um, I'm not sure that we will be anywhere at this point in, in the issues five and six next time. I think it'll a lot of depend on, on how the evening goes. We know, again, none of us function very well beyond about two and a half hours. Uh, and so I think the concept is, we'll get as far as we can, and we'll figure out when the next time to bring people together, and whether we need, again, to do, um, when we want to begin that engagement process, because I think that's going to be an important part. So, again, this is just to give you a draft, to kind of just begin to think about it. Um, and again, I will be sitting down with Matt and Tom and Mark on Thursday, and we'll really try to tighten this piece up, but this just gives you some of the things that are in the thinking phase right now that we've got to look through.
So I just thought of questions for you to do.
Yes.
So I know you and I talked about the first three items are really to get us, you know, review things, get us all on the same page. So I assume we should bring, we have packets on demographic studies and facilities, and we just have the. we just have the trends packet.
Right.
The new piece that we'll have that night will be the cost analysis piece, right?
Right. And our sense would be, we will probably send that out to you in advance.
Okay, so we will have a.
So that you'll have, you'll have that, you'll have that to look at, plus a revised agenda with any kinds of modifications or changes we want to make there.
Okay.
But I hope it can be, there was a pretty free-flowing discussion, because, again, what I don't want to do is get us locked into, here's the only direction that makes sense to go. I think we've talked over the last year about, you know, we stretched out quite a ways in terms of saying, well, what is the future of Montpel? And what could it do? Is there a better purpose or structure for Greveville Park? Do we want to continue to keep the preschool programming and the community ed programming in a segregated space that really is not attached to an elementary building? Or not attached to, to the kids that are the next oldest kids? We talked about leveled learning in terms of saying, how does that work? And I think we need to balance that against the impact of when you do a leveled program today rather than 20 years ago, which is kind of the last time we did leveled learning. What's the difference in terms of the amount and the complexity of special education programming we have now that we didn't have then? And the fact that, and as you mentioned, that specialized programming, if you don't have enough kids in a particular building to make a program be efficiently run, is there some fairly huge cost implications when you make that happen? And that, we do, I think, need to, need to take a hard look at, because there's some things that leveled elementarys do for us. There's also some major headaches that, again, really just weren't there 20 years ago, the last time we operated in that kind of format. So I, I really think it's going to be important for us to kind of lay those pieces out and talk about. So yes, we'd like to have people bring all the pieces you have, and then we'll provide the, the fourth piece, and we'll provide an updated agenda for you so that you'll have it when you come to the meeting next week.
And that is Wednesday, August 20th, and it'll be in the community center here at 7:00 o'clock.
And again, probably what we will do is create our famous egg, omelette, whatever. We'll, we'll move the pieces together.
Campfire, I like that, a campfire.
I like the camp, rock campfire works too. But yeah, it creates campfires so that everybody can kind of see each other across the table. Perfect. Yeah, no, no, no goodbye, I'm saying, John won't go, won't go there. He's already checked out on that piece, it's not happening. Right? No, no.
A third item for information is that board members got the teacher workshop schedule on their packet?
That's correct. Again, shows you those pieces in terms of, not only the new teacher workshop, which, again, it will be a two-day activity this year. What we've found over the last few years is just the level and complexity of all the different things that the teachers need. If we jam it into one day, their, their heads are spinning, and then we send them back to their building to thread work, and, and they struggle. So this, this gives us a chance to kind of spread those pieces out, to get a chance to work on their own technology. They, they get a chance to travel their schools, meet their principal. They also get a chance to do, to learn about all the kind of the core components of our mission vision, how DCSDC works, the various tax services, and introduction so they understand PLCs, kind of doing all those parts. And then the follow-up then is the documentation for the fall workshop, which is the 25th to 28th, beginning on Monday, the 25th. And again, we, for this year, we are, again, also going to be doing the concept, as I already said, Go Day. And so as part of the programming, one of the, of the days, in terms of the fall workshop in each of the elementary buildings is set up for an I already said, Go effort. So again, we really think that's an important part of kind of having everybody ready, and for having teachers having the background in terms of information and data about their kids to be able to really start up in a very positive way. So obviously, you are welcome to attend any of the things that you'd like to attend. I'm sure Mary would be happy to see you if you'd like to come into any of those pieces. But this gives you an idea of kind of where things are. And again, a lot of the things for the new teachers, pieces done at the middle school, obviously, the other fall workshops are significantly done within each individual building.
Very good. So future meetings, we will be meeting again at our work session, a week from Wednesday, August 20th, at 7:00, as we talked through. And then our future board meetings are Monday, August 25th, and then we'll have September, just around the corner. So that, with that, I would ask for a.
The school will have been in session for a week at that point.
It will.
Yes, it will.
With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
Move with her.
Moved by Noel. Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting, motion carries, meeting adjourned.